Um, I'm going to call the Sims Street Board of Education Curriculum Committee meeting to order Sept- uh September seventeenth eight thirty in the morning.
Great.
So I'm gonna throw it over to you because I think I would like you to um give us some updates, please.
Sure, absolutely. So there are two main things on the agenda this morning and we have Maggie Seidel, Principal of Simsbury High School and Georgia Robert, Assistant Principal here to um just give us an update on the vision of the graduate. And uh we've had a couple of conversations relative to the VOG and specifically on reporting. And wanna share with you kind of how we ended the year and some reflection and additional information and data gathering that Maggie and her team did and provide is is going to provide a next iteration of of steps relative to the VOG. And then the second item is just a curriculum review process for uh share out. I'll remind the committee of the ten-year curriculum review process that we put in place the year before last. And who is up for review this year, what their areas of focus are by content. And those are the two main agenda items I have for you this morning.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. Ms. Maggie.
Hi.
Good morning. Um, I wanted to share with you an update about um kind of a where we ended the year with our um VOG um and the ability to give students feedback on different attributes within the competencies of the VOG. Um, as you know, Georgia has been integral to this whole thing. We sat on the committee back in the day when it first started. I was in the elementary role. Uh but then has really taken the lead in terms of the rubrics and all of that. So my close consult when we do all of this work. So last year, if you remember, we allowed teachers to consider attributes within the competencies that most closely aligned with their curriculum, their content um that they thought would really be a a good connection piece to give students feedback as they were in their their courses. Um, and so we really let that be a teacher choice um in order to gather some data on what were the attributes that they felt were aligned. Uh we also were looking at how the feedback was distributed to students and then ways in which that we could improve that. What we noticed is that we did have several attributes that were repeated and picked and then we had some that were not. So what we did as a team is we took the VOG um and all of the attributes and really um looked at them in terms of where they most closely aligned with our nine, ten students. So this was actually the the little activity that we did and which attributes really aligned with our eleven, twelve students.
Maggie, can I just stop you there?
With.
Because just as a reminder, we have six competencies and I'm gonna point over to the poster
Correct.
around critical thinking, communicator, uh collaborator, self-directed learner, innovator, and global citizen. So when Maggie's talking about competency, she's talking about those six larger buckets.
Mm-hmm.
And then the attributes are how we define what that looks like in practice. So each competency has four attributes. So when she's talking about attributes, so I'll give you uh for example um critical thinker, engaging in problem solving, inquiry, and reflective thinking. That's an attribute of a critical thinker. Another attribute, develop compelling compelling questions, analyzing information to consider various uh perspectives and evaluate information to reason and solve problems. So I just wanna be clear when we're talking about attribute, that's what we mean. The competency is the larger idea and there are six of those. Sorry to interrupt.
And what year did we, I remember we did this in the, we started this in the strategic plan. In what year? That was.
Uh my goodness, it was one hundred percent already up and publicly adopted.
In twenty nine.
And we were doing work around making it um more actualized in the K twelve experience, starting in twenty nineteen.
I'm seeing before COVID.
And that is, yeah, that's that's definitely reflected in our student performance goal in multiple places. Um, so we were working on that plan eighteen, nineteen, and the VOG was well in place there.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry to interrupt, Maggie.
That's okay. So of those twenty-four six.
Backgrounds always helps.
Yeah, that's okay. Those six times four attributes per, we have twenty-four. What we were looking to do is to strategically place them within the nine, ten experience and the eleven, twelve experience within content. So um we have worked to create a blueprint, take a little bit of a step back in terms of public reporting because we want to ensure that these attributes are really within the curriculum, they're within the um the common assessments and that the feedback cycle is well understood by the teacher and the student. Um, so that's where we've um we've landed. So for example, in social studies, grade nine world civ, they would be looking at an attribute from critical thinker and collaborator because those well align with what we think the nine, ten experience is and with the content area of social studies. Our goal is to provide ongoing intentional feedback in a structured way all the way through so that when they get to that capstone experience, they've received feedback in different areas um from different content areas and their experiences all the way up. And then they get the experience of the summative, you know, final capstone piece. So that's where um that's where we are, if you wanted to add in.
Um, just that, you know, we we just one example, we already had a little bit of feedback from uh the wellness curriculum. You know, we already kind of made a little switch. So we're excited um to see how this plays out in the assessments and as well, um, we have not quite had our professional growth plan meetings, but those will be in the next couple of weeks. I know I've had a lot of conversations with teachers who are planning to work this into their growth plan um as teachers this year. So I think we'll see a lot of echoing of the vision of the graduate work, um growing in those competencies, also on the teacher plan side of things.
So as you know, and the drumbeat that I've provided is that this just doesn't happen at the high school. Right? And that we start working on the VOG competencies and attributes when little bugs come in in kindergarten. And people will go, really? Are you, yeah, we're really doing that because collaboration looks different when you're a kindergartner than it does for a third grader, a sixth grader, and eighth grader. And what came out of this kind of step back process? Some of that was from your reflections and feedback. Some of that was from the data that we collected around where teachers were reporting out. We wanna make sure that when students walk across that stage and receive that high school diploma that we can say with certainty, we have taught into these skills and kids have received feedback on them. So I really applaud your work, Maggie and Georgia, for taking that step back, for looking at this and going, okay, how do we systemically build feedback loops for kids so they know where they stand? And through that process, they also said, okay, there are a couple of competencies and attributes that we need firmly tied up before they walk through the door in ninth grade. And I went, perfect. That's what we are going to take as a VOG vertical team. So that is K twelve representation, um taking a look at what are those attributes? What are those competencies that need to be pretty firm in place? That we've given feedback, that we've assessed these through the K eight experience because that's what we're going to take and really tease out this year on that team where those things are happening in elementary and in the middle school. The other thing that I want to point out is that we do have rubrics for each one of these competencies to say, what does it look like in practice? Those are written currently more in high school language that makes sense. And we have to take those rubrics and put them in developmental terms that make sense for our elementary students and our middle school students. So that's accessible and it's known and there isn't question about what this looks like. So that's the work to come that I can update the curriculum council with as far as how is that work looking on our vertical team K eight this year? But that's where we'll be honing in.
Could I just add in one quick point about the rubrics?
So.
Please.
Just a second.
Um, I just wanted to mention at the high school level, because NIAS comes back every ten years. We are always, always well familiar with having our school-wide expectation rubrics.
Thank you.
Um, and the latest iteration of the NIAS accreditation accreditation standards switched all over to the vision of the graduate language. So the vision of the graduate is language is all throughout the current NIAS standards, which we start our collaborative um conference visit next year. So um that is, you know, a good reason why we had to take a look at our rubrics a little bit earlier on because we always are thinking about, you know, when NIAS comes, that we have to have that alignment with our school-wide expectations. So that, so it's exciting to have the vision of the graduate where we're just not high school expectations anymore, but we're K twelve expectations, so.
And there has been shifts. This is a little bit of a sidebar, but there have been shifts in that NIAS process. So in the spring, I thought it would be helpful, if it is helpful, to members of this committee to do an overview on what that process is.
I think that'd be great because it does take a lot of energy and time and
And it's a multi-year process.
I think it's very helpful. But yeah, and it's a, and it's an uh there, how many years between NIAS visits?
It's a decennial visit, so every ten years.
A decade, okay, every time.
And they've added a process prior to the three-day visit and it's called a collaborative conference. So that happens um as a precursor to that decennial visit. And that allows schools to really hone into, hey, this is where we're kind of needing to focus for this decennial visit. This is what's important. They have um very specific standards that they wanna make sure are reflected in your practice, in your documents, in your conversations. So I can give you that entire overview.
Uh, very helpful. Thank you. And they're starting this spring?
No, next year.
Did you say? Next year.
Next year.
Next year.
Twenty twenty-five.
Spring will work on pulling our steering committee together um so that we're ready for that twenty-five, twenty-six start.
Twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, Lydia has a question. Lydia?
Yeah, hi Sue. I just have a question. I'm looking at your slides. I'm on the first slide, Vision of the Graduate Update. Is that the correct one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I just want to, I just want to uh reiterate that we reported out public twice. Is that the K, am I correct? Is that K six and then seven, eight?
No, that was.
When you said that you were.
Yeah, we reported publicly twice last year, Lydia, at the high school.
Okay.
Right? So that was last year.
So that's not.
We're stopping and pausing on the public reporting this year because Maggie, Georgia, the teachers want to get their heads in the process down around where these competencies and attributes are assessed by course and how. So we're not publicly reporting this year at all and we'll give updates on how we pick up that public reporting in the future. But we're holding on the public reporting right now.
Okay. All right, good. That makes sense. I was just, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss that publicly reporting to, you know, area that you were talking about.
Yeah. Now, Lydia, what we did do last year in our VOG vertical team, we looked at our report card and we said, okay, we've been publicly reporting on these different skills for years, many of which are aligned to the VOG. So I think when we get to that kind of component on what this looks like, K six, we're not there yet, we'll be looking at how to align our report cards to the competencies in a more explicit way.
Great, great. Well, that's very impressive. So that's 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 uh that is really a great goal to 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 get to.
Okay, I think Jen has a couple of questions. Jen?
Yeah. So that was my first question was, so we're not changing the language on K through six report cards yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Um, because I do think that if we want them to, and I know I've, I'm beating a dead horse here, but like I do think that that is critical to get them prepared for high school. This should start way earlier.
I I do agree with you as well.
Bang it out and and like, great. And then.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And so the reason, Jen, that we didn't take a bite out of that apple for this year is you'll be um uh I just wanna remind that we have the Think Math, which is different this year. So we wanna take a look at what is most important to report on.
Little district.
So there's a shift there in the math materials and there's also a shift with the science of reading that's coming up to be implemented next year. So we don't wanna change and then have to change again. We wanna do it once, we wanna do it right, and we wanna do it aligned.
Yeah.
So that's why we didn't do it for this year.
And and just for the record, I believe that the current K three, K through six report card already includes many of these things. It's just the language isn't there. So I think
Yes, it does.
One hundred percent.
that it's almost, in my opinion, easier to get your head around on that K through six than it will be at the high school level. Um, because a lot of that stuff is already there. On the high school level, I still struggle with, and I guess that's where I would love to like follow up on this later on, is that many of these these things, in my opinion, are already done in the high school. Like they already, the critical thinking is already on, I would not say just social studies in anywhere that it's done. The self-directed learning with their own projects is already done. Their, you know, group or collaboration is certainly already done. And so I just think it would be interesting to see, like the rubrics, how much of that is written in language that like a kid can understand it? And then, you know, how is it different than what we're already doing? Or is it just highlighting what we've already done? You know, I don't know. And so that would be interesting to see. And also on the, many of the, I don't know what percentage of kids capstones come from a culmination of the four, you know, of like um that just happened from through their classes, whether that's architecture or whatever. What percentage of kids do that?
Yeah.
And do those kids, if they're going through a whole program, what does that look like at the end, I guess? Where are we just, you know, having that that survey that's done that says, you know, did they use Global Citizen or Communicator? Like, I guess I guess that end versus a person who's doing a project outside or an internship, how does that look or feel different? I'm not sure I s- I see that yet.
So a couple of things um related to your comments. First, I think it was, it was last year, it was October of twenty twenty-three, where we had Dr. McKay come in and share, hey, this is where our students are meeting the expectation of capstone.
Yeah.
Whether it be through an actual course, whether it be through an internship um or another capstone project of their choice. So I'm going to ask at our next meeting that I just get you some of those updated numbers.
Deta- yeah, data.
So you can kind of see.
Yeah.
And what we wanna make sure though is, yes, are we assessing these competencies and attributes through the capstone experience? One hundred percent yes.
Yeah.
And if that's the only place where we're giving more formal feedback for students, then we can do better. Because it just shouldn't be, okay, these are where these skills are assessed to to make sure. It's, hey, over time, what does this look like? How was your critical thinking measured as an eighth grade student? And you're right, these skills are assessed all over the place, but we have to be more intentional, I think, and deliberate.
Yeah.
And give students the opportunity to get that feedback and then respond in that feedback in different ways.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I guess, and I guess that, yes, I totally agree.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I still go back to, then I think what our, in general, I think our students lack is and particularly more at the high school than elementary or middle school, is that one-on-one conversation versus another number or grade or something. I think having an adult sit with them to say, hey, here's what I think, or here's what's not working, or whatever, like we do with the capstone. I mean, those kids get one-on-one person telling them versus just another data grade. That would be ideal if we did.
Well, I think that's part of the the important work that teachers are doing this year. Where are we assessing this and not just as a standalone, but in our assessments that are already occurring within the curriculum?
Yeah.
Right? So if I'm um responsible for giving students feedback on demonstrating an awareness of audience and adjusting purposefully in communicator, and I'm already assessing that, I'm gonna give you feedback on exactly what that looks like in practice within an assessment that's already occurring.
Yeah.
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 It's important. And to your point too, um Jen, when I was thinking, you said, um, you know, it can be seen in multiple content areas. For example, critical thinker, which is that engage in problem solving. We're giving kids feedback in our, in the ninth and tenth grade in math, but also in social studies. So you, you know, they can see it in different content areas because sometimes you'll see a discrepancy of, I'm really confident in social studies when I'm go, you know, approaching a problem or looking at it. But when it comes to math, I'm struggling a little bit because that that can look different.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and how do you hone into those skills as appro- um when it comes specific to content? So, yeah, those are the definitely pieces that um we saw as we really took this and and spread it out and looked at it over the the nine, twelve experience.
So I'd love to give this committee an update in the spring as far as how this work is played out through over the course of the year, both in teacher goals and in the work and in the assessments and give you a better feel for how this kind of reflection, stop, pause, reboot, move forward is actually living.
Yeah, we had, we we need to hear from teacher perspective and K twelve, I'm not as worried about. I just think it's a, it's, I think it's a language piece.
K twelve.
Primarily with K, I mean, not K twelve, I'm sorry.
K six.
K six. Um, so the the junior high and high school are a little more concerned to me because I wanna make sure that and granted, this is, this will take care of itself very shortly.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're in that in-between phase, so I want all the kids who leave knowing that they're meeting these needs
Right.
and I want them to be able to express those to career counselors, to, you know, whoever they wanna get a job with. I want those things to be in their, in in their confidence of who they are for the success of each student.
Right.
So um, and I also, we are not the only school doing this. So that's the other thing. It's like anything that we can glean from other people's success would be helpful to us too. And I'm sure you're doing that because that's how you guys roll, but um I would like.
We have people reaching out to us. We have a school in New York that's contacted us two times now. Yeah, and they wanna come for a visit.
Yeah.
Yeah. When you can work together, I think it really, we can get, we can go faster.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
It's really hard. Um, it's hard meeting a hundred, four hundred kids. Well, more than that, but yeah.
I just think that if you go, if we go back and just take a step back, like I just think, I love the work that that's being done at the high school, but but to me, the goal should be really more K through six and get them started because once they hear that language, also parents will then be familiar with that language.
Right. Parents, it's great for families.
And so the whole family will get through. So I know it's a long term out, but once those kids get there to the high school, you know, I think
I agree with you.
everyone will be.
It's part of their.
Not as.
That's exciting.
Correct. It's just everyday language, you know?
Oh, and and, yeah. And honestly, I don't, um, I I think if we had started with these kind of concepts, we'd be there now, but it's one of those things that was so new when we started it and it's just we're all learning at the same rate. And other schools that are just starting it now will be ahead because they've learned from our and efforts.
Well, and as you know, we are in our next iteration of our strategic plan and we're gonna be developing that this year. And I think it's going to be crucial that this VOG progression is reflected in our strategic plan. So more to come on that as well.
I um just want to apologize for being on my phone a second ago. I just told Lydia to mute while she wasn't talking because they sound like, like. I know she's just reading something. I hear paper shuffling and I'm like, for some reason, and it was wondering why I was on the phone. All right, thank you. So I think we're moving on now. Does any more questions?
No, we're definitely gonna get a data follow-up on capstones because now we'll have two years of.
Yeah.
November nineteenth, it's our next meeting and that's when I'm slated to give you those updates as well as an update on AI.
Fabulous.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. By all means, get back to work. Let us hold you back.
Absolutely. Plenty to do.
Those peo- those people are way more important than us.
Plenty to do.
People looking for you. Right. Have a nice quiet morning, we hope.
See you later. Thank you. Thanks.
Have a good day.
This fog has been crazy.
I know. That's something.
Yeah, it's crazy.
It was really, it was charming.
It was dark this morning.
It felt eerie this morning in the, in the early hours.
Very eerie, friggin' doom, man.
Um, so the second topic that I wanted to share with you is just a review of our curriculum review process to share with you which content areas are up for evaluation this year. Um, to share with you what does evaluation mean? And to let you know what the expectations are. So when I'm engaging leaders in an evaluation year, it's not to say, hey, all curriculum is up to date and blah, blah, blah. We evaluate what needs to be done and then we create a plan. So the first thing I wanna share with you is this, um, and I've shared it with you before. This is my master document, uh, my ten-year plan of who gets uh up for evaluation and when. So you either have an E for, hey, that's your evaluation year. You um have an I for implementation or P, like you're presenting kind of the work that you've accomplished as a department leader. So this is a document that just keeps me clear and transparent and gets me to kind of proactively on-ramp leaders to say, okay, this is time for next year and this is what we're gonna be doing and this is what it looks like. Because I work extremely closely with not only uh Betsy Gonzalez at the K six elementary level, but the department supervisors in each content area at both the middle school and the high school. So this is more just a was a reminder for you that that's the master plan behind curriculum review.
What's the P again?
That they will present.
Okay.
That they will present. So three major content areas come up for evaluation each year. Because that's a lot of work. Um, and we don't wanna do everything at once. This year, it's PE and health or wellness, math, and library media. So I've developed a document of expectations and what happens in evaluation year. So the first thing that we do is we look at the current content standards in that content area. So for math, what are the national content standards relative to math? How well does our current curriculum align to them? How uh do there ha- does there have to be any changes or adjustments? Are there standards that aren't currently addressed? And I wanna remind everyone that there are a lot of standards. So sometimes we have to prioritize which standards. Um, because when, when I think standards are being developed in a content area, people forget that there are multiple content areas that students are learning about in any given year. But that said, we look at the content standards. We look at VOG integration, vision of a graduate integration. What competencies, critical thinker, communicator, collaborator, self-directed learner, global citizen, innovator, are you addressing within your curriculum? Right? So there's this dovetail, Jen, that you were kind of alluding to, right? Um, that's important and I wanna make that more explicit than it currently is right now. Uh, we look at our units of study. Are they standards aligned? Do they articulate these big ideas or these big questions that we want kids to grapple with? And how well? Do those need um kind of any adjustment? Um, are they aligned with the VOG competencies, our units of study and not just our courses? How are we integrating technology there? How are we integrating um what we call differentiation? Meaning how do we set up instruction? How do we set up assessments in a way that um speaks to the needs of many individual learners? Um, we take a look at our assessments. What are common assessments by course, by grade level? How are we assessing what we value? So if we're saying the standards are paramount, if we're saying that this knowledge or these skills are paramount, how are we getting at that through an assessment way? Sometimes those assessments are those standardized assessments like ESPA or SAT or our NGSS. And sometimes they are course-built assessments and really taking stock at what those assessments look like. Um, we also take a look at textbooks, right? What texts are we currently using? Do those need updating? If they do, there is a very specific textbook adoption process. So I remind um people about that and part of that textbook adoption process. Um, I've gotten into the cycle where when I came into this role, we made sure that any texts that are going to be used by all kids come before you, before they. that are going to be used by all kids come before you, before they even go to the larger board, right? So I remind people of that adaption process. And then we go back to our curriculum blueprint, which is again on our website, it's under curriculum. And it comes up as these big squares around content area. And we say, okay, do we have to make any adjustments to that based upon the adjustments that we made here? So that's dynamic, I encourage anyone to take a look at that curriculum website, because it gives grade by grade what the units of study are, so it's very clear to everyone. Um as a reminder for this curriculum review process, we also use a a software for housing our curriculum called Ediplanet, we take stock of that. What's an Ediplanet right now? What's in other places? How do we ensure that over time we are utilizing this warehouse to its fullest capacity? Um then we have our leaders in conjunction with me and principals define, okay, what are your major priorities over the next couple of years? And that's what we will bring to you in curriculum committee. So that's a lot of talk.
And it's a year-long process too.
Yes.
So it's it's not like anything quick.
It's not quick, cause this is a quick.
And they knew it was coming last year, so hopefully they prepped with all these questions. You gave them all the questions last year.
I sure do.
So they um and as this ten years goes on, they'll be expecting it, because the other classes will be doing it, and they'll be like, oh my gosh, you know what I'm doing? Like, oh yeah, I'm gonna have to do that next year.
I found we really fell out of this formal transparent cycle, so I'm glad that we have brought it back.
I'm too.
I wanna share with you again, all of those components, it's a lot of work when people evaluate their curriculum, that's why it takes a year. Because we go through every single component of that, and then they have to prioritize. So over the next two or three years, what's your plan to make sure that things are current? Um because that's what our students deserve, so.
Well, that's that's the that's the that's the foundation for success.
So.
Well, I have a question, before we go to that, um oh, I'm missing my question, did you have a question?
I do. Um department supervisors lead that task, right, with you? But before it's like finalized, you said, do do we gather information from teachers who are, you know, actually in it, or is it really just more the department supervisors that lead?
No, DSs are le- department supervisors are leading that work, it has to be with teachers.
Okay.
It has to be. So what I've also done is any kind of resources and time or funding to do this work. If it's outside of the school day, I have prioritized for the departments that are up for review. So that work can be done. So some of it is accomplished through department meetings, some of it is accomplished through professional development days, of which we have one tomorrow. Um so it happens in many places and spaces, but it absolutely is done with the teachers.
And has Ediplanet done K six, seven, eight, nine, twelve, or is it more, you know, just the high school or?
Yeah, it's definitely more of a seven through twelve construct now. And we are looking to what that's going to look like at the elementary level. We have um we use different ways to house our curriculum. We it's very clear and consistent K six through Betsy's leadership.
Um and and also has expenses related to it too.
Ediplanet does, yes, it does.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um is Ediplanet on anything for parents to see? Like, is it in the handbook, like, look here?
So the curriculum map is Ediplanet brought to the surface.
And the
Yeah. Correct.
So those curriculum maps are made through Ediplanet. So it takes the units of study kind of deeper down and it brings them to light in those in the website and in those kind of icons.
Mm-hmm.
So that is Ediplanet, actually.
Yeah, so it is, it's both, okay.
It's powered by that, yeah.
And parents know when to get it and they hear about it at Parents Would Like?
The correct, yes, and I update and give public reports to the board to remind people as well that it's
Right.
It's on the list or sometime, yeah, from principals.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, throw it through, yeah. That's just the important thing is
The th- it's a three-year process though, right? The the each one, right? And so if that's the case, who was first year and it's like, could we ever see like, where are they now? Kind of thing at some point, you know?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely, so if we look at um art, so Shannon Gagne has already done that update
Yeah. Okay.
and given you, like, here we are. Um they were the first out of the gates, one hundred percent.
Okay.
Uh which was extremely helpful for me to start putting my head around, as well as social studies.
Yeah.
And you'll recall that um Mr. Adamson and Mr. Rich Curtis came to the board last year and did a an update with them as well.
Okay, and so they're done.
So. They are done with their assessment, they still have work to do, don't get me wrong, right?
Right.
So especially with social studies, as you'll recall, they did an update on their new standards.
Yes.
And a lot of our vertical teamwork, so whenever someone is up for kind of curriculum review
Yeah.
um in English, math, science or social studies, we s- restart or reinvigorate their vertical team. So to take a look at what this looks like K twelve. And so when they were looking at their new standards and how the units of study were playing out seven through twelve, even K six, we're like, okay, we have to start shifting some things that align better with our standards, that align with what the state and nationally is saying these experiences should be. So that work was accomplished last year, that was reported out in those public reports to the board. And now it is in another couple of years, they will come back again and say, here's the progression.
Yep, but it's really an ongoing thing.
Always. It's not static.
It's not, right, it's not like there's ever an end and like, okay, now we're done.
It's called, it's called continuous improvement.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can take a little bit of a breath, but
Correct, right.
Right, yeah.
I gotta be working with the
Well, because changing changes things and things.
And it's hard to be ahead.
Sure.
Well, oh, so many changes at the state.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
Alright, sorry.
Um Lydia, do you have any questions?
Uh yeah, this is very interesting, I'm glad that that my question is, when you when you present this again, is there any way to encapsulate the past with that? I know I I was listening and you mentioned something something Sue about that in the past years.
Yeah, that's what that's what Jen just asked, and Sue said yes.
Yeah, that's why I was I was I couldn't hear Jen too too well, but
Sorry.
but that was my question.
Yeah, I think Lydia, at the end of this process, when a content area kind of engages in a curriculum review over the course of the year, I always ask them to come to the board and publicly present. So last year, you might recall that Shannon Gagne from art presented, we were actually at Central School the night she presented. And then Alan Adamson and Mr. Rich Curtis as the department supervisors at the middle school and high school came and presented when we were at Terrafill last year. So that's one of the culminating pieces of saying, okay, you've come to the end of a year and this is what we found in here are the next steps.
So we'll probably see them in the spring then, as well.
You will.
Fantastic.
There you go.
What a great day.
It's a lot of good enthusiasm coming from you.
Systems and structures, I love it.
Right.
Systems and structures.
Uh create the system and work it. So math, I wanna share with you up for review this year are math, PE and health slash wellness and library media, and what does that look like? So first and foremost for math, we have had a math vertical team. Uh this was one that I thought was imperative, that meets even before their um year of review. So we've been meeting as a math vertical for the past couple of years, and we've been doing so on a monthly basis. One of the celebrations of that work is we've been talking about and defining what does math engagement look like? What does it look like for, what is the teacher doing when there's math engagement? What are the students doing when there's math engagement? What are our tasks look like when there's math engagement? Um we have on that vertical team both Pat Long, who's the department supervisor at the middle school, Matt Milch, who's the department supervisor at the high school. Uh we have a couple of math coaches at the elementary level, as well as Betsy Gonzalez, as well as some administrators and multiple teachers to give us the teacher lens on what this looks like. And we have treated these meetings very much like professional learning sessions. Where we're looking at articles and research about what this looks like, thinking through what does it mean for Simsberry? So their work, I'll tell you with math, the standards are pretty clear.
Yeah.
The standards are pretty clear in a very different way than they might be for a humanities course. So we are going to spend less time, some time, more focused time on these concepts of math engagement and math assessment practices. What do we assess? How do we assess? How do we get kids ready for these assessments? Whether they be standardized assessments like ESPA and SAT, whether they be for unit tests. But overall, what is the experience of our students as math learners here in Simsberry? So I feel K six is pretty set. As you'll recall, they had a significant math pilot last year through the Think Math. Um they've been
Which which came in because the previous math program fell apart.
Yes, meaning we weren't able to get those materials anymore.
So I mean, like that, so the timing on that was really important to that happened because it needed to happen quickly.
So they were engaging in this in a very different way, and I feel that the K six, just by that circumstance that you mentioned, are well set.
And Right, they were, they've already done the work.
They are well set, we've had presentations around Think Math at the board, would love for them to come back. I had shared with you at the last board meeting that there is a strong correlation between those classrooms that piloted Think Math and their results. Very, very strong correlation, and we are encouraged by those, so I feel that they're solidified. We really have to take a look at what these experiences are for our math students, seven, twelve. And we have to take an honest look and getting some feedback from students and from teachers and saying, how do we do better? How do we do different? Because again, our standards are our standards. Um but how do we make sure that students are walking away with um a real positive exper- uh experience and one that engages them?
And knowledge of the content.
One hundred percent.
I mean, I think that is our priority and it's been mine for a very long time.
Yes.
They need to walk away with content, with knowledge of content.
Yeah.
And I think any any way we can improve on that would be really, I I look forward to seeing that happening.
Yeah, so that's math. Uh PE and health and wellness, they're looking at engagement too, but from a very, very different way. More specifically um in the classroom portion of their health and wellness curriculum of how do we engage students and not just have them go through the motions and do something because I ask you, but that you're really engaging with each other and with the content, and I think that there's a lot of opportunity there. So that work is uh being led by department supervisor and as a reminder, our PE and wellness supervisor is not a seven, eight, and then a nine, twelve, it's a K twelve. And that's Amanda Roy, so she's in her second year of leadership here in Simsberry. So very excited to see where that work leads.
And so she's she's seven, twelve?
K twelve.
She's K twelve, okay.
Right, so Shannon Gagne, Lisa Abel in music
Yeah, yeah.
and Amanda Roy in PE and wellness are all K twelve department supervisors.
I love it.
I love it, I think that's really good.
Especially on wellness, there's probably new or exciting things that, you know, that can engage, you know?
That can always improve.
One hundred percent.
Do not smoke, do not drink, videos.
And there are very and there are very specific standards for both physical education and health and wellness.
Yeah.
So we'll be taking a look at those, and just as I shared with you, we'll be working through that process.
And and I'm sure the content is um ever-changing, as you were saying. I mean, what 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 they can use to get to those um not the content can definitely be improved.
Yeah, I think we have really engaging engaging opportunities
Make more engagement. Yeah.
for students.
Yeah.
Right?
Cause I wonder if they find it in the te- if the teachers find it easier to engage when they're actually outside, like doing the, you know, flag football or something, or doing some program versus in the classroom and how, you know, the difference suits you, and so maybe
Yeah, there's a lot of parts, a lot of moving parts in that health and wellness.
Be fun, it's be interesting.
And PE. And then uh library media, so library media takes more of a collaborative and instructional support with colleagues. I would say that our library media specialists are also our content specialists in working with their colleagues on inquiry, like what does that really look like in practice? How do we have kids um innovate and explore and critically think about topics within your content? Uh but we do have a K six technology scope and sequence. And we really have to get our heads around, how do we make sure that that's integrated into our elementary kids' experience um in a meaningful way? And not that it's not meaningful right now, and not that it's not integrated, but those are the types of topics our library media is going to be putting their heads around. Uh they don't necessarily, they they don't have a curriculum, it's more of a support role for the other content areas.
And there's not a national, there are not national directives for this?
Um you mean, well, directives or do they have
Or or just content, national standards?
There's um different practices, certainly, so it it's it's different.
Yeah, but it's 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 more unique. Um I would love if this could take into into some of the, especially the K six what I've worried about for students for years is the knowledge of privacy and how kids aren't learning that, like, we were given it, it was a gift, we didn't know we had. It was just a thing, we were pri- we had privacy until we chose to or, you know, we we released information. Now it's out there all the time, it's like, and this would be, I think, a great place to put cell phone knowledge and
Media literacy.
Media literacy and cell phone.
Acceptable use.
And 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 personal and personal, and it can work with health and wellness for sure too, but personal
Which they do a lot of teaching into.
just how to learn about who you are as a person and how you have to control your self, not not yourself, but what other people see.
Your blueprint, if it were, your footprint, not blueprint.
Your blueprint, yeah. Yeah. Like, you know, I think it might be a really good place to put in some of those things that um I think are missing. And knowledge of how to use your cell phone, which is why it'll work when we get to, you know, put it away in class, this is why, it's not just a nebulous idea that's coming at you in every class, it's like, this is why, because this is what we are expected of you, and this is how you can, you have your world and you can control your footprint. I mean, I just think
But I think a lot of that is covered in wellness.
It is, but it might be too late.
And it's happened for, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's an interesting, I mean, the the whole concept of media literacy and ex- um accessing information and discerning what's a credible source, what's um misinformation, what's disinformation, I think is part of this, which directly aligns with a critical thinker, right? How do you take information and and think through um source credibility?
And global citizen.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that's, I mean, like, this is this is where you're really gonna be able to how to tap into the world and how how do you how do you use the information you find.
Like for K six, it's almost an eight, it's like a doing age-appropriate AP research, you know, like what they get in the AP research, you know, it's like how they
How do you find things, how do you
Find things, how to sort.
And again, how do you find the truth?
But I have a question, the it used to be that um the library media would have um typing. We don't seem to do that at all anymore, do kids just come?
We do have keyboarding units within, within our curriculum.
They do? Okay.
Yeah, so I I think it's important to take a look at all of those skills and to get a handle on how, I mean, library media centers are hubs, right? There there are hubs of literacy, they are hubs of um whether it be tech ed or science or math, or I mean, they're just knowledge hubs. And what do we want those guaranteed experiences to be with our students?
It's exciting.
Yeah. So that's the instructional focus areas, the how those are related to curriculum.
Lydia has a question. Lydia, what do you, what's your question, my friend? Lydia?
I heard a noise, did she?
We can't hear you.
Hold on.
Okay, we got you now.
I have my glasses, I'm sorry, I have my glasses, I couldn't, I didn't do the mute button. Uh, but you, you know what, this is a really good point, Sue, that you mentioned, um, how you integrate the media literacy, you know, um, uh, Tara and Jen had mentioned something about cellphone and what have you. But I really like the concept of how do you integrate the media literacy into cognitive literacy or theory? That, that just struck a, you know, struck a chord with me, um, a very interesting chord, is, is that as we pursue further, you know, investigation, you know, with cellphone use and, and media literacy, how do you combine both of them? Oh, just a great thought, I, I just picked up on that and jotted that down.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that our library media, um, specialists have great opportunities to be supporters of skill work, teaching students how to think and not what to think. Right, and that's what we always want to focus on. As a critical thinker, what do critical thinkers do? So I'm not teaching you the what, I'm teaching you the how to think critically.
How.
So.
Yeah.
Um, so our next meeting is November nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Um, on the decade is capstone flexibility, where our students kind of entering into this experience, uh, where is their impact? Um, share with you some updated enrollment numbers.
Oh, yeah.
This board was, uh, really influential in looking at some additional credit flexibility, so I wanna give you an update on where that's falling.
Yeah. Great.
And I asked Dave Prinstein, the Director of Instructional Technology, last year to give you some understanding of what he is leading relative to artificial intelligence, and would like him to give you an update on that work, and the work that he's doing with educators.
Great.
Under the enrollment numbers, can we also add, or is there already planned to add some information about the class of twenty seven? That class, I'm pretty sure has that new finance thing and stuff like that, and update on that kind of stuff?
Sure.
Was there anything additional? And are we rolling it out yet, or how that works?
One hundred percent.
Um, and AI, are we gonna, I mean, that I would imagine would have a very strong impact to the literacy, the library, and, um, and how it's gonna connect to those two classes that you're studying.
Great connection. Yes. Yes. And Dave oversees the library media specialist, so.
Okay, great.
He can chat about that a little bit.
Tell us how he's gonna help, that'd be great. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We, are we adjourned? I don't even know if we have to, because we're a committee, we don't really, we're not that important. We are just a subcommittee where we can talk a lot, and we try to get to the bottom of things, it's good.
Oh, you can adjourn, it's nine twenty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, bye-bye, everyone.
Bye.
Hi, Lydia.
Alrighty then, um.
Okay. I'm going to see, thank you for the pen.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna go see it. Matt is here. And, uh, that's it.
Well, you go have a day.
You too, hope you don't get sick.
I'll have a great day.